Fifty-eight.
The bishop.
The bishop.
The bishop.
The bishop.
The bishop.
The bishop.
The joint session of the planning commission and the transportation advisory committee is called and ordered, and we have a work session this evening, and first we're going to get a full staff report from Laura and John.
All right. Thank you very much, Laura Turway, I'm the interim planning manager for the city of Oregon City. Last time we met, we talked about some of the technical standards for how transportation projects are reviewed, or the transportation aspect of new development. So we talked about, one, development criteria, which is our mobility standards. I wanted to sort of step back and give an overview of the entire development review process, and then also some background on how we create our standards in the first place. So I'm going to breeze through a little bit of slides as quickly as I can so that you guys have an optimum time to speak to each other. So as we discussed last time, we have our Oregon City Municipal Code, which identifies minimum criteria for development. So minimum design standards and things like that. People can go above and beyond the minimum, as we all know. It applies to commercial, industrial, office, and residential uses, so all uses within the city. We have a lot of criteria. Some criteria are listed on the screen, but we look at the design of buildings, the placement of buildings, what is that impact on the city facilities, both transportation but also utilities, easements, things like that as well. We look at landscaping, a variety of material.
And flow in and out of the property.
There you go, yes. So we have a lot of standards, a lot of standards, and for each standard, we have to write a finding. So applicants submit us a development application. We make sure that they have a finding to show how they comply with whatever the standard is, and then we write a staff report, and we'll go through who makes the decision. But in the staff report, it needs to explain how those criteria are met. So we have a criteria, and then a thorough explanation or findings for that criteria. So here's just an example of one staff report. This is for the construction of 244 dwelling units behind Oregon City Shopping Center, so it's one phase of the code. Those are all the applicable chapters. It's kind of hard to see, but it's 162 pages staff report. So for that, we thank the planning commission for going through and reading all of these staff reports in one week's time to verify that we do have compliance with those standards. So you may wonder, how does this code get created in the first place, right? Sometimes there are some things in our codes that don't apply well to all properties, or someone may not like what our code standard is. So the answer is that anyone can apply to change our code. It goes through a large public review process. Generally, we have lots of open houses, they go before neighborhood association, C O C, but ultimately it goes before the planning commission. The planning commission can recommend approval to the city commission, and it's really our elected officials that adopt this code. So it sort of normally gets tweaked a little bit along with timeline, but the public can propose code changes. Staff generally is the one that proposes code changes, but it can really come from anyone. And it goes through a long process. Normally, it takes nine months or more through just the review process, and then the process of writing the code and vetting that through different public agencies and citizen groups is about the same. It sort of depends on what your code is that you're writing.
Just go back to when you talk about anybody proposing code. If you're someone in the public, there's a process that you go through, a legislative process, that is a hearing. The city commission can direct staff, and the planning commission can make a recommendation to the city commission, and then they direct staff. So it's not just walk in the door and say, "I want to change X, Y, and Z," and we often go off and running with that. So there is a process for that, or an application.
Right. We hold our code in high regards and our public process in high regards, and so all code changes have to go through a very lengthy code review process. So we have four types of review generally in the planning division, type one through type four. Type one has no discretion. Type four has a lot of discretion. So we can go through each of the examples of these types, but we'll talk about sort of this review. When you wonder who reviews development, it's not how big a development is, it's how discretionary is a development.
Would you define discretion? How does that apply physically? That type one, when you say, I can't read it from here.
So examples of type one would be like if you wanted to do a home addition, right? You have to meet your setbacks, and we have a lot of coverage standards, and in some cases, design standards and things like that. But really, some of the criteria are very minimal. You either meet it, or you don't. It's not that one person could say you could meet it, and another person says you don't. On this screen, you have an example of a deck, right? It is a certain height. It's not arguable how high that height is. We have definitions of how we measure it, and then you look at the plans. Applicants submit plans, they prove that they meet the code, someone comes to the counter and looks at it, and we review it without this big public notification process. So that's an example of a type one. There's no discretion.
I have a question. It says natural resource overlay district exemption.
Thanks.
And we recently, in Park Place, had an individual who was proposing to build a home, and part of it was in a natural resource, a creek area, and they were required to come to the neighborhood association. Now, how does that work into this?
That's a great question, Bob. So natural resource, you'll probably see that in type one, two, and three levels of review. So in the type one, we're saying, you're building a deck over there, but our natural resource overlay district is over here. You're out of the boundary. And so we know it doesn't, you don't need to be a wetland scientist to see that the purple area of the boundary is over here, and your development's over there, so that would be a type one. When they start getting closer, then they have to start doing higher levels of review. So in your case, they wanted to build really close to the stream because of the lot configuration, so that was not only staff review, but a planning commission review as well. So the type one process can be over the counter and take as little as 10 minutes, or it could take up to a week where you have to write reports for certain things as well. So now, next is the type two process, and this is where you're going to see our land divisions and commercial developments. And again, they're all type two because of the level of discretion in those criteria. Let's see, so some examples are, that we just talked about, are, it could be condos, or multifamily, or commercial, or subdivisions. So here's a subdivision, I'm just going to pick on. Some of the criteria are lot width and depth. You know, it doesn't, there's not really a lot of discretion. You get out your measuring tape, and you see if it meets a lot width, depth, and dimensions. But there's things like stormwater, and making sure that we implement the stormwater manual. There's a little bit of discretion there, so it makes sense that it goes out to a public review process. So with that, they come in for a pre-op, yes?
Would you back up and comment about traffic impact?
So when we have a traffic study, they always go through a public review process. We don't process any traffic studies in-house without public review.
And is there any discretion at level two in the finding?
Well, it's, we have one code criteria for traffic, which is the mobility standards that we've talked about last time. So we take the I T E manual, and maybe there might be a little bit of discretion in if you fit the right land use category they use for I T, or if they congested, or something like that. So potentially, there's a little bit, but not really. We're very, when we talk about discretion, I mean, if there's any discretion at all, we do a public review process, so we're very strict. So, yes, all traffic impact reviews go through. Some of those things that John was talking about last time were like site distances and things like that.
What about, like, I don't know the triggers on this, but a certain number of lots, or a certain number of trips, triggers review beyond, you know, just the property, right? You have to look at other intersections.
Yeah, if you have more than 20 trips through an intersection, we start to look at that level of busyness at the intersection, how congested is it? And is that level of congestion okay? Again, we had the V over C ratio, as well as our level of service, depending on the intersection. And, so, yeah, some of that stuff could have some level of discretion, and that's why we always go through a public review process.
And it's more than 20 during the peak hour. Right? So that's why if you had, let's say, a five-lot subdivision, you're looking at it from a safety standpoint, not a trip generation standpoint, because the trips associated with it are statistically so low. When you talk about, let's say, a five, six, seven-lot subdivision during the peak hour, even if you had two trips leaving each of those, it's still 14, which falls below the 20.
So what about 15 in an apartment?
It'd be close. I'm not sure what the, what's the trip in an apartment at one point?
One point something.
It's not very high. It's not very high. So it'd be close. But then you still, you know, so then, you know, if you get above that 20-trip threshold, then that's where they start to look at, okay, where are these trips going to be distributed to, and starts to identify intersections that should or should not be studied. Because if you think about it, it kind of disperses out, and it starts to exponentially get lower and lower and lower the further out you go. And then, you know, the other part of it is, you know, you think about, you bring in, let's just say you do a 20-lot subdivision, by the time, let's say it's down on Central Point, by the time those trips get dispersed, you know, you may have very few trips during the peak hour, which is the concern hour, let's say getting at 213. So let's say there's six trips on 213, and how, you know, many thousands of trips go by. So you start to look at the impact, and it's very, very minimal.
So the proximity of a project to a busy intersection would have an impact on whether or not you require transportation mitigation or studies or whatever?
Well, what happens when you have, in an area, 15 different subdivisions, each of, you know, 10 lots, or five lots going in? Do you guys look, or do they get it viewed independently of those projects, or then you start looking like, oh, okay, we've got 10 subdivisions going in near this intersection? Do you add the data and see that, you know, when all this happens, there will be actually the cumulative?
Right, it's kind of like the death by a thousand cuts with small development.
Yeah.
So it usually gets caught with the T S P update, when you start to look at what the base data is, or, you know, what happens is eventually there'll be one big one. So every one of those that comes in gets added to the mix, right? So if I come in, mine gets built, you come in a year later, you have to account for my trips, right? So, but, yeah, there is this, there is this difficulty, because we traditionally in Oregon City, we had these very tiny little partitions, or these tiny little subdivisions, of the cumulatively start to add up. And where you start to really see it is when you try to, when we do the comp plan update or the transportation system plan update, because then you're capturing everything, you know, whether it's a three-lot partition, or a 50-lot subdivision, and all those trips start to come through. So it is more difficult to have a smaller one.
But potentially, if you had a, let's just say hypothetically, you were two blocks from a failing intersection, and you came in with a five-lot subdivision, you might get more scrutiny for that because of the.
Because it's a known fail.
Because you already have a failing intersection.
Right.
Versus if you're maybe 10 blocks away, and there's nothing around that, it would be an immediate impact.
Right. And I mean, let's, you know, realistically, how many failing intersections do we have that are known current?
Circle.
That's not accurate. It's not so. It's not. They are congested, but they're not a failure. You know, that's the big difference.
And I just want to reiterate what Tony said. When we do the T S P, that's when this global look happens, so we don't get this death by a thousand cuts. That's when we look at how, if all the properties were developed within our timeframe or our T S P, what will that do to our transportation system? It's when the development comes in, we're looking at it again for a second time. So it's not that we've only had one thought on that.
So take an example, in the T S P, in the 10-year plan, you fill in some property within the U G B, R-10, if that's I'm using the right term. And the developer comes in, and they like to negotiate, and there is room to negotiate. Now, just, he converts everything to an R-8, so you've got many more trips coming out of that because you have more units.
Mm-hmm.
Now, when that comes across your desk, does that trigger more review?
Yeah, that's a city commission.
Because it's really not fitting what was the original global plan.
So they'll have to admit, they'll have to do an analysis with a transportation planning rule, and look at our zone change criteria, that look at the big picture again, and then the little picture. So you look at big picture with zone changes and comp plan amendments, little picture with the development. So if you're doing a combination development, you would be looking at both.
So just a quick follow-up, about how many times does that big picture, little picture example occur per year?
The number of zone changes varies significantly. We had four in 2015. Before that, we had one, maybe two, maybe zero for a long, long time. It just depends on the middle of applications, if we have no control, and generally more strict.
So let's just say, let's just say you went from R-10 to R-8. It's a pretty minor change. So think about it, you know, in R-10, you can get 4.4 units per acre. At R-8, you can get about 5.6 units per acre, so you get about one more unit per acre.
Okay.
Okay? So if you had a 10-acre lot, it's going to be about, it's going to be about eight units if everything fit right, right?
Yeah.
So you get, let's say you got 10 acres, you take out about 20% for right-of-way. That leaves you eight acres, so you get eight extra lots if you go from R-10 to R-8. So that's, realistically, it's a single-family house, just like R-10 or R-8, right?
Right.
So at 1.2 trips per P M, you know, that's mathematically, you know, 9.6 trips, right? So, I mean, the bigger difference is, let's say you go in from R-10 or county to.
R-6.
R-6, or multifamily.
Right.
That's where you'll really start to see those changes, and that's where then, you know, you start to see larger potential impacts on intersections, because you had this assumption of.
Right.
50 acres of R-10, and all of a sudden, you're coming in at R-2, which is 22 units per acre. You're going to see significant changes then. But, you know, when you go from R-10 to R-8, it's not, I mean, it's minimal.
Correct.
Oh, what we see is R-10, R-3.5, or you see.
A lot of them lately have been.
We had the R-10, R-3.5.
Well, I'm just saying.
You had the M U C, too, right?
Well, I'm just thinking like the latest development along P's, which had been zoned down to eight, and then they split some to 3.5 and some to five, I can't remember. But, but, but the initial zoning was F U 10, because it was coming in from the county as part of the U G B. So the, you know, the, to me, the trick is not just what are the additional trips, but what is, you know, what is traditionally happening on the road? So if it's R-6s and 8s, and then they want to stick a 3.5 at the end, then, you know, it's like trying to shove too much water down the hose. And so far, you know, the, you, you know, the staff's put together some, you know, the traffic studies and the analysis have all shown that it could be done. The biggest problem is, you know, that I see, and we're getting better at it, is when the next guy comes in and it triggers the light. You know, and it's like, oh, but I got to come up with light money, and, you know, maybe I just really don't want to develop yet, I'm going to wait for you to come on in, and you put in a light, and then I'll just, I'll come in with mine then. And it's that stall that kind of happens when you get close. It's like, ooh, left-hand turn lane, right-hand turn lane.
Hopefully, you guys set up zones of benefit for big improvements like that, to put in a light.
Or we take.
Everybody benefits from a light.
Or we take in money and pay it in.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
And that's what I'm saying, is the city's getting better at that. Some of the stuff I first saw in 2004, when I got on the city commission, there was, you know, a lot of people wrangling about what order they were going to develop, because they didn't want to be the last one.
All right, it's not broken until it's broken.
Right.
Well, that is part of the issue, though, is rate of development and when?
I mean, you know, if you've got 250 houses, partitioned, come in through a, in a subdivision through an annexation, and you have four of those a year, how many of those can you take as opposed to, you know, maybe just one, or this, or that, and it's a slower rate of development? And that's always intrigued me about how cities function, is the rate growth versus how many.
But those are two different things. Right. I mean, one's a perception, right?
No, it's not a perception.
It could be a real thing. Well, but, but I could build 500 lots right now.
Yeah.
Right? And this intersection will still operate per our standard. And they could all come on in a year, right? I could build 100, and it can fail, right? So, I mean, there's two different things, right? I mean, either you have adequate infrastructure, or you don't.
Well, that's, yeah, that's my point, yeah. And we've got to figure that out. And when we do figure it out, we get to.
I think one of the things Laura said a few minutes ago, and she said, if the zoning is established, and the T S P takes into account that zoning.
Right.
Then the rate of development is not really an issue, it's whether you're adhering to the zoning.
Right.
It's when you got a, like in R-10 zone, and you change it to more density, R-6 or 3.5, now you're pushing more development than the T S P originally accounted for. It's not necessarily that it's going faster rate of development. You're putting more there than was anticipated in that T S P.
Which gets to Tony's comment about perception. You know, when development happens on a quiet road, and now suddenly there's twice as many cars, but it's still well under, you know, failure, or even congestion. But now you got to wait, you know, to pull out of your driveway, you never had to before. Oh, my God, the road's just, oh, you know, traffic. It's like, no, you had to wait four seconds for two cars to go by, and you never had to do that before. And that's the thing that gets me when developments are trying to come in, you know, they fire off that traffic, and suddenly, everything just rains to a halt. I mean, the Beaver Creek Concept Plan, there was some major development set, ready to go, and it was good, industrial, and, well, they started waving the traffic flag, and it just, it just ground to a halt. And, you know, yeah, Beaver Creek's got some issues, but the development was set to repair those issues as part of their development. So that's, that to me is, you know, you've got to make sure that you've got, you know, a real boogeyman as opposed to, you know, the weird noise under the, under the bed.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that sometimes we do, and no doubt about that, but.
That's why we rely on our standards and our code so much, and for traffic specifically, the applicant has a transportation engineer, a stamped engineer, sign off on plans, and the city has a second pair of eyes, also a stamped engineer, look at those plans. So for all things technical like that, we get two eyes of professional people to look at those.
Well, I think that, I'm sorry, I don't know what your name is.
Really?
No.
Chairman.
Chairman. Well, you brought up a really good point, so two people brought up good points. Tony's comment about death by a thousand cuts. The one, as you know, if you've ever, please don't listen to the planning commission meetings, though, but my big concern is, one of the things that we don't take into consideration, and maybe it's because we need to update the T S P, is that we have a major issue with cumulative effect. So it's what you said, you've got your container, you add X many subdivisions, or whatever the development is, and then all of a sudden, it starts pouring over. And somehow, people are not making, not making the recognition that, okay, it's these three trips here, and those five trips there. If Oregon City was a flat, regular city, I think that would be fine. But Oregon City has three to four choke points, and everybody funneling through those, or that they're going down this street, that street, they all end up at one place, and that's our problem. And somehow, the T S P and the other documents that we get to review regularly, to me, somehow, there's a little bit, for me, of a disconnect, because you're looking at all, you know, the cars. So this afternoon, when I walked downtown to the Falls event, they were backed up all the way down Singer Hill at the light at Seventh and Washington. And I walked over there to look to see how far they were, so they were almost to the railroad tracks. You know, that was, what, quarter to five, five-ish? When I came back, I saw the same thing on Washington Street. They were backed up down past 12. I mean, there was a, as John has told me, they're called a platoon of cars now, so it's a whole platoon of cars. So that happens at several different points during the day, sometimes in the middle of the day. You know, where, you know, where are they all going, and where are they all coming from? We don't exactly know, because once they leave the city limits, we don't know. But somehow or another, cumulative effect needs to be taken into consideration, and you asked a really good question. You know, it keeps, where's the breaking point? I don't know. And again, you know, people in our community do have a perception, you know, it's not like it was when we were 9,000, where very few people were cruising around. Now, all those developments up in, up in, past South End, they have three or four ways to come down to 99 or 205, and there's no other ways. That's just it.
But that's the thing, the T S P has an assumption that we will have more traffic, and there isn't really anything that's going to change as the city grows and the region grows. We're going to have more cumulative traffic as, as time goes on, and I think we just need to be comfortable with that, because it's not a capacity issue, it's a matter of.
Oh, I think it is. I mean, my, my, by my background and my understanding, it is a little bit of a capacity issue. I mean, I know, did you notice the change on Malala and Seventh when it went to three lanes?
Yeah. But, you know, I think we've also recognized that Oregon City is not the primary generator of traffic within Oregon City. We're getting a major contribution from the outlined communities.
Absolutely.
Canby and Malala.
Absolutely.
And as far as people are willing to drive to commute through Oregon City. And, you know, I know Bob's joked about putting a toll gate at the end of the road leading into the city, but the reality is, the reason that we have these failing or very congested intersections at those choke points that you're talking about is primarily because of that pass-through traffic.
I agree. I don't disagree.
And so it's not necessarily a problem with how we're developing Oregon City, it's how other communities are going to develop.
But it's part of the cumulative. Everybody gets into the bowl, whether they're in town, out of town, it's all, you know, gets into the popcorn bowl, and it's all about traffic.
Let me ask you all my questions.
You have a good one.
I think that's my.
Is this your homemade map?
This is my homemade map of Oregon City, and basically, we only have four ways out of town, and everybody from Malala, Canby, everywhere else, has to use these bridges. And we've got 100,000 people trying to use eight lanes of traffic, and they all come to this little area, and they come through all these roads where we are having our congestion. And it's because we go shopping at Quackamas Town Center, we work in Milwaukee, or Portland, or Tuolleton, or someplace. We, the people in Milwaukee who need to go to Tuolleton or Meridian Park Hospital, or Sherwood, how do they get there? They either got to go up to Sowood Bridge, or they got to come down to 205. We're in the Portland metropolitan area, but we're the only area, part of the metropolitan area, that's cut off by two rivers. And because of our sewer shutdown we had in the 80s, when D E Q, the moratorium, when the D E Q wouldn't let us develop for 20, for 10 years, we have the most supply of land, but the people who are buying our houses aren't working in town. So the only way down from where they're buying the houses to where they're working, the only way is through this, is through this area.
And having to have to follow the county.
And all the county, that, that road goes down Malala. I know of, I was listening to a radio DJ who lived in Malala, and he worked in Portland. I worked with a park, with a state park assistant park manager who lived in Silverton, and worked at the new park north of Forest Grove.
My God.
You know, I worked in Salem for 10 years. I lived in Oregon City. It was easier to drive than it was to move. That's the same situation a lot of these. That's the same situation a lot of these people are in. We have a, a three major, I, I count three major, maybe four major places of attractions of traffic. Clackamas Community College, the hospital, Clackamas County, and a little bit of, of us. But those people are pulling people in. Again, they gotta cross the bridges. They gotta use the, these access roads because the places where they can actually build are far away from the bridges. And that's, that's what is generating our congestion and our speeding and whatnot. It's because I've seen people trying to get onto two oh five coming this way, and the backup to make that left turn goes across the bridge. Because the left turn lane is inadequate. You can't get on the bridge.
Or the timing.
Timing, yeah.
Timing and all sorts of things. If you really want to get up there, the shortcut is to come down, around through and use Main Street. But it's only congested about fourteenth.
Well, don't say that on tape. We don't want people to be doing that.
Yeah, everyone knows. Yeah, well, everybody knew anyway.
No, I mean, you're, you're absolutely, you know, correct.
Is it, is it, is it an expectation? And this is a serious question that both didn't know the answer on. Is it an expectation that, at AM and PM peak hour that we should have free flow? I mean, is that the goal?
I would think that AM and PM hour, I have sat down at Rush Hour, Rush Coffee.
Coffee Rush.
Yeah, Coffee Rush. And I have seen the people trying to get across that bridge. Take about fifteen minutes to get from Tenth Street to the bridge.
On a Friday, you should see it.
Every night.
I try, I, I walk down, I walk downtown if I have to pick up something at ECP on Fridays because there's no way you could get from Tenth and Main to Seventh.
If there's, if there's an incident on this bridge.
Everything shuts down.
But if there's an incident, but if there's an incident anywhere, I mean, that has significant impacts on the system, no matter what system it is.
But just picking up what Henry was saying, if you go down there and you see all that traffic backed up on Main Street, sooner or later, that's gonna have an impact on retail shopping too.
Yeah.
And so, we've spent a lot of time in effort of urban renewal to make that attractive for that. But if it comes to parking lot for an hour every morning, every evening, that'd have an impact.
Part of the problem with all of the things you mentioned is, we don't control those lights.
We don't control any of them.
Yeah, it bothers me that this is not a, more of a regional problem. It bothers me that local jurisdictions have to, have to suck all this up and deal with it, even though there's other people coming out from other, other cities and using this system, just like the Sylwood Bridge, and nobody willing to pay the taxes to rebuild the bridge, even though we all go over it. I think that's insane.
So, I guess, I started, you know, we have already debated, you know, is the goal free flow twenty-four hours a day? And then I think the second part of that question, though, is, you know, how much are you willing to pay for that? Right? I mean, how do you balance the investment? Because, you know, it's kind of, it's got the law of diminishing returns, right?
What are we paying, what would we be paying for?
What are we getting and how do you pay for it? And there's a lot of equity issues.
But I don't think free flow is realistic. But I think that what we've talked about in the past is that.
That's awesome, Henry.
When people get frustrated, that's, that's when problems occur. But I thought, one thing Henry illustrated really well there. The choke points happen when there's bridges. And none of those bridges born during the choke. And, and so, you know, it's the last of the alternative bridges. You know, if you think about it, there's not a, there's not a way to get across a river between Oregon City and Wilsonville. Which is, you can't carry.
You can't carry.
And so, you know, between here and Wilsonville, you know, we, we've had this long, long distance that you either have to go south or you have to go through Oregon City.
Well, you know, one thing, I think that, in essence, this, this is not going to improve in any way. I mean, people have a, a lot of people are moving to Portland metropolitan area because they really love, love to live here. And so, they're moving, I mean, in the last two years, about a hundred thousand people moved to Portland metropolitan area. So, the question is, how do we guide that process? How do we develop as a community? Uh, how, how do we, you know, what are our expectations as, as people are moving here? How, how do we, how do we build our community? And what kind of, you know, traffic flow do we expect to see in our community? And, you know, the densities are getting higher and higher. I mean, uh, everybody wants to kind of live at city centers. You know, like, we lock jobs, we lock, you know, like, shopping. You know, you're gonna go to decent restaurant, you have to drive. So, we need to create a community and, or, or have a planning process that attracts people to maybe even want to build. And we, you know, we need to grow in a, in a, in a, in a smart way. And what's the smart way? I'm not sure, but, you know, I think this is all happening.
See, I think you hit on something there with the restaurant and really opportunities. For me, the goal is not free flow at, at, at peak AM and PM. The goal is more live work and more, more restaurants, more things where I'm not going to want to drive half hour for chicken wings. I mean, if my favorite restaurants were here, I would, we'd bike, we'd walk. We would eliminate those trips from our system.
Or, or at least adjust the time that you're gonna go do something.
Yes.
As opposed to, it's gonna be a flyby because I'm not gonna turn around and go twenty more miles back to get it, so.
I mean, I don't think that would help. I mean, I drive twenty-six miles to my work because there's really no, not, you know, a, a job here in, in the community that I could, I mean, there's not really real employment opportunities for what I do. So, I have to drive. I love living here, but I have to drive. And so, a lot of things have to change in terms of how we develop the city. So, we want to stay here, and so that would help out a lot.
Well, and, and I think, like, with both development, you know, if we could get some sort of end state and, and vision, which the TSP to a large extent is.
And the comprehensive plan.
Right. But we also gotta get people used to the fact that it's gonna get worse before it gets better. Because you have to hit a certain critical mass before there's enough, you know, money for the major infrastructure thing. Like, you know, we all know that the, the fix to Beaver Creek in two thirteen is an underpass. But that's not gonna happen until the whole, basically, all of the Beaver Creek Concept Plan develops.
See, and I think it's, that's too late.
Well, and I understand that. But, but certain things, you know, I mean, traffic is, is rough here. But I lived in LA, traffic ain't rough here.
It's all, it's all relative. It's all relative depending on where you are.
But we don't want it to get LA rough.
No, I don't want it to get there.
I mean, we don't want to sit and, and have the lunch truck open up in the middle of the street because everybody stopped and he sells out before they move again. But it happened to be.
It's a good idea for a business.
Yeah. But, you know, I, I think part of that is, you know, the education process that the city as general needs to go through with, yes, there's gonna be development and you are gonna have to sit in your driveway for a few seconds. You can't just back out blindly anymore. You know, and, and it's gonna be like that. But as things build, as people's, you know, commercial development happens, which will increase traffic, but don't be afraid of it, embrace it so that the development can occur, then people will live and work here and not be driving to Portland. And that's, to me, that's the, the, you know, it gets back to the traffic boogeyman, that people fling out there to try to keep the nineteen fifties with four thousand people. Everybody works in the mill and, you know, half the people don't, have never been to Portland. And that's not the case anymore. We need to get past that traffic boogeyman. And I don't know whether that's, you know, Planning Commission or, or Planning Department doing some sort of education outreach, you know, but.
Well, you know, if we had a vehicle mile tax, I mean, as you know, if you've studied this, our culture became mobile when automobiles became possible. And people, as somebody's mentioned in LA, think nothing of commuting two hours because that's what they have to do.
They'll go two hours just to go out to a restaurant.
They might. I mean, it depends on where they want to go. But I mean, we have, as a society, we have been conditioned that, you know, have car, will travel. I commuted half the distance you did. I did twenty-six miles round trip. But I also had an employer who recognized the situation, and I worked at an off-peak time. And it worked great. I was never really in traffic because I didn't leave in the morning when everybody else did, and I didn't come home when everybody else did. I was right in that sweet spot. So, it worked for me. But had I had my druthers, I would have rather continued to work in Oregon City. But, you know, when opportunity comes, you decide you're gonna take it. And it's, you know, there's just, like you said, what you do is not here and what other people do may not be here either. But we haven't, we haven't been that fortunate. What happens is, you know, when we were, when we were dealing with the Lamont Falls Hospital, they have a lot of single occupant vehicle trips because they have shifts. So, you've got Nurse A coming in, you've got Doctor B coming in, you've got this technician coming in. So, there's not a situation where you have people coming in at the same time because they're on shift work, but there's one person in all of those cars, which is another issue, you know.
Should we have any substantive, uh, transportation band management program framework in our TSP now?
Transportation what?
Demand management.
Demand management.
Yeah, so that companies can do staggered hours and have van pools and.
We have nothing prohibitive, so.
We don't have anything.
We don't have any, uh, curbs.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know in California, they are mandating those things in various places.
Well, you have to see the shield in the work yard.
Yeah.
In some of our concept plans, you might see them. And then also in our parking standards, we reduce parking for TDM or TR, um, TDM as well. We're now working on a, a grant to look at downtown.
So, some of the TDM ones that we've seen with the hospital and the college and the oil, and the county, you know, it was like offering subsidized bus passes.
Right.
Trying to encourage folks to get out of the, out of the vehicle, you know, trying to encourage carpooling, making it easier for workers to, to carpool together. So, those are the kind of TDMs.
Then again, you know, I'm heart, I'm legalism again, I think that's a lot more successful when you take that approach.
Yeah.
Instead of, you know, having a Portland Oregon City.
So, um, I don't know, we've had a good discussion here, but what about type three and four? Kind of putting a bow, putting a bow on this.
See, some of us, we deal with this all the time.
So, for type two, we have a pre-application conference, which is an initial research meeting. It's, uh, it is not, there's no decision or anything. It's where someone gives us a plan and they give us three weeks to research it. And then we email it out to more than thirty different people and agencies. And they give us their perspective, like the fire department. I look through our planning code and we give our comments. You know, it faces the wrong way or whatever. So, we have an initial meeting with them. Then they submit their application. We have some legal timelines once they submit their application. Legally, we have thirty days to review an application for completeness, and that's our state law maximum. We'll give them a list of what they need for a complete application. We review it, make sure it's complete. Once it is complete, then we notify the public. We post, uh, I'll talk a little bit more about our notification in just a minute. But we do a lot to try and make sure that our public knows about our development applications. We accept a comment period, so we have criteria, right? These, this one hundred and sixty-two page staff report, lots of criteria. Our job is to make sure that each of those criteria are met. There's one that's not met, it's denied. We have conditions that says, yeah, you didn't have a tree here, but you place a tree here. And then, you know, it's feasible, you can do that, and then you'll be approved. So, often, development is approved with conditions. So, then there's a decision that's made. The decision is mailed to everybody who made comment on the application. Anyone can appeal those decisions as long as they made comment on the application. Those appeals happen to the city commission. So, we have a staff level decision with no public hearing for most development because the level of discretion is very low. Here's an example of the public notification. You've probably seen these things around town, posted on those blue signs. We put our complete application on our website. So, um, we want you to see what we're doing. You can, um, we'll talk about the ways in which you can sign up for our RSS feeds in just a moment. But we mail notices to all property owners within three hundred feet. Now, the state law requirement's only one hundred feet, so we're triple that, right? So, we post it on our website. We mail it to people, we post a sign there. We email it to more than fifty, sixty different agencies and people. We mail it to all neighborhood association chairs. We want to make sure that we get the word out. And we also have other avenues like email RSS feeds you can sign up for as well. So, again, here's the notice. On the notice, it lists the applicable approval criteria, a summary of what's going on, our phone number, please call us. We love when people call us. We can direct you to the website so you can take a look at their application or we could just talk through it for you, with you.
Just a real quick question. Many people call in and say, I read the sign and I have a question?
Yes. I wouldn't say we get one a day, but yeah. We don't have that many notices in general, it depends on how busy we are. But yeah, people say, I saw a blue sign, what is that about? I was driving by kind of fast and I didn't see it. So, you don't even have to read the sign, just say, I saw a blue sign in this location. What's, what's going on? And there's three and a half of us in the planning department that do current planning, so we'll, we'll all know what, whatever it is that you're referring to.
Sometimes you get a, I didn't see a blue sign and they're supposed to be.
Then we'll fix that too. So, for public notification, anyone can comment. You don't have to live here, you don't have to work here, you don't have to have anything to do with Oregon City. Anyone can comment on these applications. This comment period is important. We, we do not consider comments that are received after the public comment period or before. It's gotta be within that public comment period. The state laws, or our code has a minimum requirement of two weeks. They're almost always at least three weeks because we give the applicant a week to put up the sign and things like that. So, it's a surprise if it's less than three weeks.
So, Laura, what if my comment is, this development shouldn't happen until they build a new bridge?
So, these things aren't popularity contests, right? We have criteria. And it's always goes back to this criteria. There's a lot of criteria that the planning commission can attest to. And so, for transportation, we go look at our transportation code, right? Twelve oh four, two oh four, that section. What does it say? How much congestion do we allow? Where do we measure it? Does it meet it? Did they do that methodology correct? If so, it's approved, right? We allow X amount of congestion, it's under that standard. The lot is so big, it's allowed, right? So, we'd not, it's okay if you don't like our standards, but our review is to see if you comply with the standards. When we create our code, it's maybe more of the time when we start to see the same comments of, I don't like a certain thing, a lot averaging, whatever it is. That's the more appropriate time for when we create our standards, but we are just reviewing our standards. Does it meet it? Yes, no.
What can be done to make those blue signs more substantial? Because it seems to me, like, most of probably fifty percent of the time that I go by one of those blue signs, two days later, it's blown over or fallen over. I mean, it's just useless to have the signs up when they're laying on the ground.
Right. So, the applicant has an obligation, they sign an affidavit that the sign's gonna be up. So, if it ever falls down, please let somebody know and we'll make sure to have a new sign there. We do have this, the planning division supplies the blue sign. So, you know that you're consistent, you know what you're looking at. So, it's this weather resistant material. And then we tape some, some notices to it. There's a map of what's going on as well as that specific notice. So, we laminate them and then tape them to the sign. And it's up to the applicant to put it on the post and secure it and make sure that it's always up. If they're, or if they're always crumbling in the weather, we can kind of take a look at those signs. I've not seen them too much. Normally, I see how they attach the sign to whatever post. Like, if it's stapled into the post in the middle, that sometimes, you know, is not the best. Normally, the two stakes on either sides. They're better, or they're better. But yeah, it's definitely.
Real quick, um, because I know we've got a couple of planners or past planners. Is there a better system in your jurisdiction that you want to?
We use plastic and they come back with them and we reuse them.
Plastic is like the, the.
Like the.
Like the.
Yeah, it's like the little honeycomb plastic.
The paper ones, yeah.
Yeah, because we.
So, do they, do they manufacture all the text on that plastic or do they attach something?
All the text on the plastic. And all you do is get a, a white strip that you paste on there with the dates of your comment periods or whatever, and you have everything else. Notice of proposed tree removal, notice of proposed land use, notice of proposed, uh, neighborhood meeting, and then we've got.
And all the details that show up on the signs too? Do you staple those on or?
Four different templates. We, oh, what we use is laminate plastic, like, uh, eleven by seventeen laminate plastic and whatever plans and notices we have. Four different templates. We, oh, what we use is laminate plastic, like eleven by seventeen laminate plastic and whatever plans and notices we have, we just slap it on the thing.
Because we use plastic signs too, don't we? Same thing?
They're not the corrugated.
Kind of cardboardy.
Yours are more like...
Would you like to know what it was to do when I worked for the city?
In two words?
Two, well, it won't be two words. But anyway, I had to deal with the local dry cleaner would give me extra bags. So if I knew it was gonna be raining, I, I, we handwrote them. So the lettering on them was about this big. We used the big giant magic marker and said, conditional use permit. So you could read it when you drove by. And then we made the applicant post it, but we didn't post a map that was, you know, it's been, of course, one of my complaints is that it's too small. And if you're, it's posted in a place that you can't get out of your car or see it, then, you know, what is it? So. But we wrote, we, we had, we wrote it out, you know, we had ones that said, conditionally is permit. We had ones that said subdivision. We had ones that said whatever it was. We had four or five different templates. And then we would write the rest of the, you know, application number. And like I said, I had to deal with the carousel cleaners. They gave me a big roll of laundry bags without their name on it. I would tape, tape it up, give it to them and say, post it. And we never had a problem with them getting wet.
I think it's...
And it was, it was much more labor intensive and we had only two people, but that's what we used to do. And they were very readable from the public right of way wherever they posted them.
There is this balance between this desire to post as much as we can on this one sign versus making it readable from far away places.
Even if, even if they posted on the right of way and if you're going speed limit, all you can see is that it's a blue sign, but you can't tell what the application number is. You don't, you can't, yeah.
If, if you're driving, it doesn't matter how big the letter is.
Yeah, I, as a member of our community, got real angry once because we expected him to stop and read.
Oh.
It's just impossible. I can't read the traffic signs that the letters are this tall, let alone the ones that are, you know...
Well, Charles, mine were like this big. You could tell, you could tell what it said. But anyway...
Sounds like on this issue, they're not fatal flaws.
No.
It's just they fall over once in a while.
Something to consider. Okay, we'll take a look.
Well, I appreciate the fact that Oregon City has a three hundred foot notice.
Yeah.
But I think it should be more than that.
We also put our notices on the website.
Because, well, I do because I'll give you a perfect example. My property is three hundred feet wide. So I could have something happening on this side of my property. This person over here would never hear about it.
It's from your property boundaries.
Boundary, all the way around.
So it starts at the edge of your property.
Right, but my property is three hundred feet wide. So that's... Oh, I see what you mean. I go, I got you.
It's not just from one point.
So there are some wide properties. It's true.
Well, just know that if you see a blue sign, you need to figure out where it is and then go online and figure out what it is. And if not, call them.
Well, don't tell me about it. Tell them that I'm a citizen.
Well, you have to call them. I'll tell them.
Yeah, we're in the middle right now trying to finalize our, our website redesign. And part of that is a, is a better interactive map for, for land use, a little bit cleaner, you know, a little bit more simpler. And then if you wanna get into the details, the links are in there.
Are there.
But it'll, you know, essentially be like a balloon, right? So it's like, okay, if I'm driving down Warner Millie, you know, the trick is how do we inform people that this resource is there? You don't have to know exactly where it was, but it's like, hey, I was on Warner Millie, kind of out by Warner Millie. And then you'd see a bubble there, right? You could go and get all the information.
And that's why maybe something like what, what Denise was doing where it said subdivision or, you know, addition or then when they go down the bubble and, okay, now it says addition. Subdivision, that's the one, click and then off it goes to the link with the, with the site.
So it's really trying to use all of it.
We're trying to engineer a solution here and I don't think we're gonna be able to do it. Yeah, I think probably one of the most common problems that we've talked about, Bill, is not the legibility of the sign. It's when the sign falls over and blows into the bushes and you can't see it. It's that attachment to something.
The community college one, the one on the Beaver Creek side was laying on the ground. The one on the opposite end was actually visible. But, you know, I didn't go in that way. I went in off of Beaver Creek Road since I needed to see the Innskeep Center. And I said, hmm, where's the blues? Where's the blue sign?
It's propped up leaning on tires right now.
Oh, it's still leaning on tires?
Leaning against the tires.
Waiting for the next good wind to come on.
Stacked up.
Well...
Maybe we can, maybe just summarize three and four real quick. I mean, I don't know if you guys wanna hear us talk or if you wanna have a discussion. I mean, trying to be respectful of your time.
You did forget some, you did forget the historic review board under type three.
They're just examples.
They're just examples.
No, I meant on your little bubble, you have, you have which seat, planning commission?
But yeah, yes, we did forget it, but we didn't forget it. Or I was just focusing on planning commission. Thank you. That is a good point.
Well, they need to know that, you know, that's another legislative body that has written authority.
Yes, a legislative hearing body. So first, first off, if you give us comments, they get integrated in the staff report. We respond to your comments. So they, they are valuable. We do respond directly to them. Planet, type three means it goes to a commission. The criteria is more discretionary. Here's an example criteria. The characteristics are suitable, you know, what does that mean? And there's a little, a lot of discretion in that. Because of that, they go through the pre-up, the completeness review. Planning commission writes a recommendation and findings with the staff report. But it's really the planning commission that makes the final decision. And so we have a public hearing or a series of public hearings. People can testify before the planning commission. They have the legal authority to make the decision. Their decision is appealable to the city commission. Our notices are a little bit different. On the notices, we tell you when the planning commission hearings are. For planet, for type three, these planning commission historic review board, we also post notification in the paper. Bob, you had emailed me a very comprehensive list of questions and I hope that I'm answering all of them. You asked which papers we provide notice to. It's the Clackamas Review, but it also goes to, it's Pamplin, Pamplin Media Group. It also goes to Estacada and there's a third. So it goes to three papers actually.
Oregon City News.
Oregon City News. And then the, when we're in a pinch, sometimes it goes into the Oregonia. We have to post things in the paper at least twenty-one days in advance before the hearing. So it's gotta be printed in the paper. We also have a secondary transmittal. So we email everything out to sixty people, right, when we have development. But when it comes to planning commission, we email out the agenda to everyone too. And then for type four, applications which are city commission reviews, like zone changes and comprehensive plan amendments, a lot of discretion, right? We really wanna take a look at these. Our comprehensive plan is our guiding goal for the, for the city. It tells us how we want to grow with transportation, you know? It balances that maybe we don't want six lane, lane roads everywhere because that's not the kind of city that we want. And so when we look at development, it talks about those sorts of things. The criteria are the most discretion, right? Do we change a zone? Yes, no? You know, it, it's, one might say yes and another might say no. We send out the notification for planning commission hearings. Planning commission is a recommendation. So they can either deny the thing or they recommend approval to the city commission. When it goes to the city commission, we take the agenda and we end it, we email it out a third or fourth or fifth time again. And the city commission has the same process over again. City commission hearings are on the record. So you have to talk about what was ever brought up before the planning commission. You can't bring out new issues. You can, new people can speak. They just can't be in new issues. They'll review the staff report with findings and normally tweak it a little bit and make a decision. So this, so the city commission is not appealable to the city commission. It's actually appealable to the Luba, which is the Land Use Board of Appeals. So it starts to go into a court. So planning review is very legal. We have legal authorities. Only certain people are granted legal authority to make decisions and these decisions are all based on criteria. And the review process is very legal as well, right? It gets reviewed to certain bodies and can go up the chain through the court system. So opportunities for public notification. We have an RSS feed, which is a fancy way to say email signup. It's on our website. There's a list of things that you can sign up for on our website, like meeting agendas, but also includes these land use notices. Again, we create a website for every application that goes before the planning division that has some discretion in it. So type two through four. And we post everything on those websites because we want you to see what it is. We don't tell you what it is when we have the pre-up stage because we don't have an application yet. We don't tell you oftentimes before it's complete because we want you to look at it when it's perfect, right? Not, we don't want you to miss anything as it goes through the time. So you can find up our notifications on the website or on the planning division. That's it. I passed ten minutes. I'm sorry.
I will say this, the, the city has consistently done an excellent job on getting notice to people. And I, I find it flabbergasting, if there's such a word, that when somebody says, I didn't know this was going on or I didn't get a notice. Or, you know, I mean, there's more than one way to see something. And it depends on how much somebody, you know? Even when we mail notice to people, it's still, oh, I didn't see it, you know?
Yeah, we'll just...
The response, the response to mailing, sir.
I know, but when I see something that comes from the city or the government, I open it up and look at it because it's important.
So we're trying to get as many people to look at these things as possible because we're better off as a community if we do this all together. And see, are aware of what's going on, but it's really hard to get comments. We don't get that many at all. And if we get them, it seems to be on certain issues with certain champions of that issue.
It's behind like, like comments that we get. But you know, Charles does a great job of making sure that we have honesty with our applications and our reviews.
The one, the one thing I have noticed when I get communicate from the city or especially when I'm reading those planning boards, I would really appreciate it if there was a one sentence description of what the project was about on it. Because I see all the verbiage. I see everything. I see what, but nothing tells me what the proposal is.
Yeah.
On the notice or on the agendas?
On almost everything I get. It says a land use, a land use is proposed for your area.
I, I just had a discussion with staff about that this morning.
Yeah.
So thank you. It's good feedback.
And it might be...
Nineteen dash seventeen doesn't tell me anything about it.
I agree.
Well, just to respond to, to John again, when I had my most recent land use application, I came up, got the sign and they had the little thing taped on the side. So I took it off, moved it over and wrote down the file number and what I was actually doing. So that when people walked by or drove by, you know, it was reconstruction of a garage. And I had it in four inch letters. And then I taped the little thing back on it. So, I mean, you could read it.
So you, it doesn't need to be four inch letters?
No, no. I just, I just, I just embellished the notice.
It's a procedural violation.
No, it wasn't.
The notices should have a really good one or two sentence description, but I agree with the agendas. There's some improvements to be done.
Well, again, I would say hand in hand with that, I, I appreciate the fact that you've got a lot of information to really communicate. But for the sake of those blue sign notices, I would say less words and, you know, more to the point what, what it's about. And just have a big phone number on there.
The phone number is big.
Ninety-eight percent of that is mandated.
Yeah. But you know, even if it had this file number...
You can write really, really small, have a big title.
I, do, do, like, so when somebody comes in and says they can't read, I'm coming right back. Do you, do you, do you in the elevator where you say mandated notices available at?
Yeah. But seriously, if you had a really, really big title and a really big phone number and somebody looks at it and goes, whoa, you know, you've got the subdivision going on here. Who do I call? And the phone number's like...
Is it on the inside?
Yeah, it is on the blue sign.
So, so John was gonna go, we, we can talk about noticing, but I wasn't sure where you guys wanted to go.
Well, I think one of the things that was, that was on the comment, so the transportation advisory committee is wondering if there's a trigger point determined year before at which it makes sense for our group to look at it, whether it's, obviously we say type one, no, that's automatic. Type two possibly, is there a trigger there? Maybe it's on type four when you're reconfiguring land use zoning densities or something like that that are gonna impact traffic, that we would get a look at it. I mean, we don't know necessarily when there's a traffic discretionary decision that's being made. And we don't know whether or not we have a role. Maybe we, our only role is we get the general plan. There's enough elasticity there that you can make some discretionary decisions and we shouldn't be taking our time on it. But maybe there is and that's what I think we're trying to figure out now.
And I think that's probably one of the main questions that we need to get addressed is for all of us, when, when is it our turn to say, hey, I got something to say about this?
Well, I have a perfect scenario that's just starting right now. Maybe this will help us get through this process. As chair of the Park Place Neighborhood Association, I get notifications of all that stuff. They are now, just a week ago, I got notified of a pending annexation proposal, two annexations in Park Place. They're substantial signs, which will, the annexation, we're not addressing development at all, of course, but we know what's gonna fall. So if those annexations are filled with homes, it's gonna have a drastic effect on transportation in the Park Place area, especially the Polk and Boulevard.
What is drastic?
Drastic? A huge amount of cars.
That's, that's the kind of the trigger that, that people, you say drastic, you know, you know, I mean, that's, that's...
Well, let's say that they're, they're putting in...
A hundred homes.
No more than that.
Two hundred.
Two hundred and fifty to three hundred homes. And they've got, what is it, ten trips per day for a home they figure?
Are you assuming this is developable land?
Well, yeah, it is.
It has a concept plan or...
It's in the concept. Okay, so yeah, let's just assume, okay.
So now we've got, where was I?
Ten, ten, ten trips. But I mean, remember, it's not so much the trips. It's the AM, P and P.
So it'd be about one-ish.
Right. So, but, so the AM, P and P would be what? Fifty, sixty percent of those trips?
One per house.
Basically.
One per house.
So it's a prognosis of one and a half.
So anyway, what I think, what I'm looking at is a huge impact on the whole.
Three hundred more trips basically.
Not, not to mention the intersection down there at Redland Road and possibly the connection on into Washington Street out of two thirteen.
So that was just one annexation. That's the larger one. The smaller one, probably another fifty homes or so.
So, so let's just, just deconstruct this a little bit, okay? So we, we, we adopted the Park Place Concept Plan.
Two thousand and seven, eight.
So then, since then, right, so that, that, that set some base, right? That's at a comp plan, right? What the densities would be. What the densities, what the assumed densities would be, right? So we have a two, everybody know, we have a two-system map here. Comp plan, kind of general, low density residential, and then a zoning map, more specific. Our, our ten, our eight, our six all fit in that low density. We have each one of those, right? So we have this comprehensive plan inside our regrowth bracket, right? So when we updated the, the, the Park Place Concept Plan, part of that was looking at water, sewer, transportation. And those got adopted as part of the TSP or the Water Master Plan or the Sewer Master, whichever one it was, saying, okay, full build out of Park Places, and I don't remember exactly, sixteen hundred units, fifteen hundred units, probably somewhere in that, you know? So if that happens, it's gonna create X trips. It's gonna impact X intersections. This is the improvement that's gonna be, right? So that was kind of the, that's the theory behind the, the long range plan is to say, okay, we know we gotta, we know we're gonna grow. Where do we want it? How do we want it? And when it happens, what do we need to do to accommodate it? So then, right, annexation comes in and let's say it's two hundred and fifty houses. There's, there's probably some improvements identified that, that, now, the question will be, did two hundred and fifty trigger that improvement to happen? Or is it the two hundred and ninetieth or is it the four hundred and fifty, right?
Yeah.
So that, so when we talk about it's gonna make it worse or it's gonna impact it significantly, we, we get that. But that's not something I can deny an application of. What they're gonna do is say, okay, it's gonna add at the PMP, let's say these two hundred units are gonna add two hundred and fifty trips. And those two hundred and fifty trips are gonna be between six AM and nine AM. And they're gonna cause this to happen in Redland in two thirteen. And this still complies with your code. Or it might not. It may say, you know, you're gonna have to increase the queue length storage or you're gonna have to increase the left turn signal timing. Or, you know, there's gonna be something that's gonna get it, there's gonna be some improvement identified that'll get it back down to meeting the code. And the next guy may come in and he may break it and they may make the queue a little bit longer, right? I mean, it's, it's not an exact science and it's not like, oh, if you do A, you have to do B, right? But, but it's globally...
I'm not, I wasn't getting into those details. What I was trying to determine was at what point in time the Transportation Committee should start to become involved so that we can help the Planning Commission when the development phase starts coming forward.
Like, like, should you look at ten acres or above annexations, or two acres?
Or should your involvement be during the Park Place Concept?
Right.
Or the TSP, right, two separate legislative processes, which, I mean, they did go before, both of them went before Tac.
Because, I mean, and I don't mean this in any disrespectful way whatsoever, so please, I mean, I think this is a great conversation, right? But when you look at stormwater, or you look at transportation, it tends to be a very technical finding. It's a transport, it's a traffic engineer running trip calc's through, to determine a level of service. And either it meets it or it doesn't, right? So, what would, so at, at the implementation level, if, you know, we've already agreed, we've already agreed to the rules we all get to play by, which was done at the policy level. That's, I mean, that's truly where you affect change, right? If you, if we hear something like, "God, you know, I, I really don't like the way you allow these houses to have, you know, garages, three-car garages," right? Well, you affect that at the policy level, and you change the code. You don't do it once your code's in place, it already allows it. So, it's kinda like a chicken and egg thing. It's like, okay, what can the Trans, can you, Transportation Advisory Committee identify things they have concerns about, that maybe our code isn't addressing, or they're not addressing adequately, right? And then we, then we have that discussion, and we say, okay, can we formulate a policy? Then can we formulate code to implement it, right? And then that becomes the, the code that I have to, we, that we do, right? So, just trying to, to identify where's the best place to put yourself in. Because let's say you did, let's say we said, okay, every subdivision that creates more than fifty lots, Tac's gonna look at. Our consultant, their consultant puts it together, our consultant looks at it, says, "Hey, it meets every one of your code criteria." So, then what do you bring as the Tac? That, because what I, what I've noticed is people get really frustrated. It's like, gosh, you know, we, we, we came out, all my neighbors came out and said, you know, "We don't want this." And we're always like, "I understand, but, we appreciate your comment, but it's, you know, here's, here's the ten criteria." Because, you know, can you show us how it doesn't meet one of these? You know, and it's, so it's, it's that education component of the rules we get to play by.
I would encourage that copies of those criteria be distributed to the neighborhoods, not to individual neighbors, but to the...
So, it is...
The neighbors have the ability to, to look up the criteria and...
But let's be realistic. Are they gonna do it? No. One of my jobs as a Chair of a, of a Park Place is to try to communicate with the people at Park Place. If they come to me with a big to-do about a whole bunch of homes coming in, then I have to do my best to support them in their wishes, but I don't know the criteria.
Do you have a land use chair for Park Place? Do you have a land use chair for Park Place?
Yes, I do.
When, when the city Planning Commission, uh, Planning Department puts together the application, the biggest chunk of that staff report is the criteria. And so, when we convene as a Planning Commission to weigh out whether or not a, a project meets the standard, the Department has already laid out the, you know, sometimes ten or fifteen pages worth of information related to the applicable planning criteria for that project. And I know that, you know, I read that little thing, and Denise jokes about specificity, where, but, you know, it's very, very specific as you read that, that the criteria that we are supposed to judge that it's not intended to be a subjective process. We're supposed to be evaluating it based on the objective criteria that's been laid out.
You're mandated to do it through quasi-judicial process.
But if the neighbors don't know what the criteria are...
So, since we're having, since we're, since we're talking to each other...
It's been published seven days before the hearing.
But Charles, it's too late when they get the staff report. So, when we get, in our neighborhood, when we get a request from someone about whatever, and they come and meet with us, one of the things that we talk a lot in our Neighborhood Association is, what is the criteria that we are going to be looking at to review to determine whether we have any issues with this particular project? And sometime, I'm talking about the Neighborhood Association. So, we, we talk about that at the get-go. I get a lot of people who call me up too and say, "Such and such is happening, what do I do?" My first thing I do is I say, "Do you have a computer? You need to go online and look at Title Seventeen, and this application's criteria is wherever it is, and look at that, and, you know, this is what you need to be thinking about when you are putting together your testimony." Or when they come...
And I know city staff goes to those neighborhood meetings and makes presentations of projects like that.
But I mean, if they don't know about it, it's, it's not, so, neighborhood to neighborhood, it's not your job to say to the neighbor, the neighbors that are coming to you with their concern, to defend what their concern is. If their concern has no basis in merit or value, there isn't a whole lot you can, you can do. And I get people who call me up all the time and say, "I don't like this."
Yeah, we can't legislate on what's...
And I tell them that I cannot help them or suggest that they come to hear, "Yes, please come, but here's what you should be looking at, here's what you need to be thinking about." Because telling me that you don't like it, whether it's a type one, two, three, or whatever, isn't gonna cut it. It's not gonna help the staff, it's not gonna help that person. So, telling me that they don't like it, and I know that's not what they wanna hear, but that's what I tell them. This is because I'm also the land use chair in my new room. So, here's the criteria, let's look at this, how does this meet this, how does this, is it to our advantage? And again, you're not a planner, I am, so I know that. But that's what you need to be talking to them about.
So, I go to Title Seventeen.
That's where the pole ball waxes.
Hold on one second. John, John, let's, we can come back.
I think we've got broadened the issue again. We don't need to look at all the criteria that you're looking at. We're the Transportation Advisory Committee. So, if you had, I'm just picking a number, twenty criteria and two of them related to transportation, that's all our committee would look at. We wouldn't be looking at everything else, I mean, assuming we had a reason to look at it. So, we don't need to see all the rest of that as the Transportation Advisory Committee. We just need to see that finding that dealt with the traffic issues. And if it's type one and type two, and there's no discretion there, we wouldn't need to see it. But if, for some reason, it had policy implications, maybe you're guessing what they are, but then maybe we should look at it. Not that we would necessarily have an impact on that particular development, but it would be a yellow flag saying, "There's a policy wrinkle here, and we need to straighten it out." But we don't get any forecast like that until we get there for the five- or ten-year TSP, and then it's just, you know, tons of that.
Yeah. And so, one timing thing about this, so we have our notice, and the notice says you have to make a comment within a public, a comment period. Tac is welcome to comment, or individual people are welcome to comment. You just have to make sure you get your comment within that time period. So, if Tac were to do something like this, in some cases, you may only have this three-week time period.
I agree, I agree. We can't, we can't play with that timeline. So, we'd have to decide we're gonna have one or two people talk about it, or a special meeting, you know.
So, let me give you an example real quick, is whether it's a type two, which staff does, and that, you know, and that's applicable to the City Commission, or it's a type three, the City Commission, or Planning Commission does, or a type four. The standards are kinda the same, right? The difference is gonna be what you were getting at, is there a policy implication? So, you could imagine, let's just say I'm a big retail tailor, and I come in and build on a lot, right? And I show that I'm meeting all of your level of service standards per your code. I'm gonna add a left turn lane and put a light in with an arrow, boom, I meet your code criteria. But then there's a policy that says, you know, we, we, you know, if the city discourages cut through traffic of existing neighborhoods from your development, from your commercial development, okay? Kind of a policy decision, right? Which is why, which is why it's at the Planning Commission or the City Commission. So, I mean, they are looking at those. So, yeah, I guess the question is, do you have a role there to look at it as well, or to comment? You know, because we've had this discussion with the Natural Resource Committee, they, they don't really, they have no mandated approval criteria, right? So, we've struggled with this same, you know, I mean, almost exact, how do we get involved? Where do we get involved? Is it better at the policy level, or not?
I personally think that at the policy level, I mean, that's really where we're setting those guidelines. Where we can steer how we develop and make suggestions, you know, if we, for comp plan, you know, if there is an issue by building five hundred homes in Park Place, and that's gonna change our community with those densities, then, then that's, that's, I think that's the, the right time, or, once it's already decided, you really don't have much standing, or no, no value that we would be giving to the table. I mean, Planning Commission is already making sure that they're complying with all the codes, and staff doing the same thing. I, I think sometimes, quite often, people just don't like, not liking it, it's one thing, which is, you know, are they really not meeting the code?
And I guess what I would suggest is, goes back to what you were saying, if suddenly you get the comp plan dropped on you, and here's reams of data is, whether or not you comment on something, I think it'd be beneficial for you to get the action, and maybe it's even, and here's what happened, so that you can start building a view of, you know, we're, we, you know, the comp plan said, you know, A, B, C, and it's been seven years, and D, and E, and F have crept in. And, you know, we can see that, because we're just looking at transportation. So, we're just seeing that creep as opposed to the global, where it's, it's creeping, but the umbrella looks the same. So, if you were just to get those and, and...
For information, though.
Yeah, and for information, and then you can, you know, look at, you know, hey, look at these seventeen transportation things that happened in the four years since the last plan, and it looks like, you know, we're, we're, you know, doing a lot of money in lieu of left turn lanes, and it's, you know, backing up, and now, we, you know... Here's, here's two examples of two things, just off the top of my head, that have changed since I, since we started here, roughly, you know, fifteen years ago. If you look at kinda south-end area, there are a lot of cul-de-sacs that are one lot away from making a really good, like, street connection for a block and alternatives, right? So, that was one of the things we were, that, that we started to notice, right? And so, then the other one was kinda these super blocks, these really long blocks with no vehicular or bike path connections through them. So, you were kinda getting these long dead ends that would never connect, or, you know, "Oh, I'm not even gonna think about the next ten-acre lot that's vacant next to me. I'm just gonna worry about myself and not think about connectivity and..." So, it took years to do, but, you know, it's very difficult to do a cul-de-sac now, and there's a maximum link to it. There's a, there's a maximum block width that you can have before you have to put in a street. So, these were things we started to notice, that then became policy, which then getting codified, which now we implement when a subdivision comes in. So, that's kind of an example of, you know, let's just say you see two years' worth of subdivisions, and you kinda say, "Hey, I kinda, you know, why is it happening like this?" right? And have that discussion. It's something we want, if we don't want, do we change it? You know, maybe it's curb bump outs on arterials, or is there better traffic, you know, I mean, those are kinda policy things that then get kind of...
Remember when we had a couple of hearings where we had a stubb street, and the community of that neighborhood came in and said, "What do you mean, there's gonna be a through, through street here?" And so, it was like, well, what do you think happened when we put this barricade here that ended?
You're taking away my on-street parking.
You know, there's gonna be a, a street, but, you know, back in the day, when we told people that they had to allow for, you know, a through street someday, "Oh, you're taking away my land, I could get two more houses." And we had, we had a couple of appeals, but the City Commission said, denied the appeal, and said, yes, there needs to be a through street through there, because they needed to have connectivity. So, it's something the city has thought about for a very long time, but, you know, when you're faced with a developer telling you that, "Well, you're costing me two lots," well, sorry, but, you know, this needs to happen for the future. That's just the way it is.
It is in our code.
Yeah. And, I mean, you know, you didn't realize there was a dead street there.
I think, I think the other, the other misconception we sometimes get a little bit is that, you know, we're somehow just back there negotiating some deal.
Ooh, yeah.
Well, you do have two conference trips up there. But, I mean, you know, a lot of it is, you know, having those, I mean, for us, you know, in, in, in planning, we're, we're kinda the neutral route, right? We're, we're taking comments in, and we're applying our code the way it's written, right? And so, trying to balance that is sometimes difficult. I think it's frustrating for applicants, and it's frustrating for participants, public sometimes. Of, "Why aren't you doing what we want, or what I said?" And so, we're kind of in this, you know, well, here's what our, here's what our code says. Let's focus on, can we change the code to get what the community wants? And that's really where that, that happens. And to give back to, like you said, the review, this, you know, one thing that I've seen happen since we started, you know, for, is the, you know, instead of having straight grid streets, the, let's have streets that sway, because it's a traffic coming thing, because you don't have, you know, racing threats.
You mean, putting a curve in it, you mean?
Yeah, just, you know, where, where it kinda jogs like one lot over in the process, so... And that would be something I think the Tac could review coming into it, is, okay, we've built four subdivisions with this. What, you know, maybe they go out and say, "What is your, do you have issues with your street speeds?" Because there's the, you know, the, the transportation, you know, God manual that aggregates the entire United States, but there's also the individual cultural things that happen, like, hey, we're, we like small cars. So, racing on a windy street is fun for, you know, Oregonians as opposed to, you know, Floridians. And so, you know, that would be, you know, something they could be looking at, "Oh, maybe we just need to go back to straight streets," or whatever. But, I guess just going back to real quickly, and then Paul, you know, I think that, you know, there's this perception that, oh, they just approve everything.
No, they don't.
I mean, our job is to identify issues when someone comes in to try to develop and try to show them what our code says and how they can meet it. If they can't meet it, or, hey, I've got this area up here, and I wanna go from R ten to R two, it's like, look, it's not gonna happen. You're not gonna have staff support, so, you know, if you still wanna go forward, certainly feel free. So, I mean, we're kinda like this gatekeeper as well, trying to, trying to think, you know, we think we kinda know what our comp plan says, and generally what's acceptable. So, you know, our objective is to not have a big floor fight in front of the Planning Commission arguing about something. I mean, it happens from time to time. I mean, there's folks who are gonna go, but, I mean, the reason things go smoothly is because staff is doing their job, getting developers to comply with our code.
So, that being said, you...
Or they don't make it that far.
Yeah.
You would say that the majority of the applications that we will see will have a staff recommended destination, or...
The denials happen in the, in the pre-ops.
They do.
The amount of countercalls that we get at pre-ops that never go forward is pretty hot.
So, another technical aspect, we, we run into issues of traffic study design. And knowing, you know, just how many intersections to include, how big the traffic study needs to be, depending upon the size and the scope of your, of your development.
A little bit of art.
A lot of people, you know, you get a lot of pushback from others that, that, you know, "Hey, you know, you guys are asking for too much traffic study here, this is just a, this kind of development, you don't know, do that." So, just passing something along, we set up a set of standards by which we design traffic studies.
What's your jurisdiction, or you what?
Lake Oswego. Lake Oswego?
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, and, and exactly, I mean, there, there is a little bit of this part, right? You're putting in a fifty-lot subdivision. Our TSP, because we've done that TSP work, we kinda generally know proportion of trips. Certain trips are gonna go north, certain percentage are gonna go west, certain are gonna go south. So, we kinda say, okay, here's kind of the base. Forty-five percent are going this way, forty percent are going this way, and the remaining fifty percent go this way. Unless you, applicant and traffic engineer, can show us why we should not use these percentages, these are what we're gonna use, okay? And then, it's okay, well, this is gonna generate, you know, two, you know, a hundred trips, so that means forty-five are going north. So, forty-five are gonna go north, and they're gonna go through this, and, I mean, so, you know, like I said, it's a little bit of art, but, I mean, it is based on assumptions that are made.
We get around our harping on background impacts to, to, you know... We get around our harping on background impacts to, you know, far-flung intersection that we know traffic will go to, but it's not very quantifiable.
So, I mean, one of the biggest killers we have in our system, especially on 213 or Beaver Creek, is you've kind of got the, the existing condition today. And one of the requirements, let's say you wanted to go from R10 to R8. If you have to, you apply the background. So you make this assumption that, okay, over the planning horizon, so let's say it's 18 years, you're going to have 2% growth. So you apply 2% compounded over 18 years. I mean, it's just, it's a lot of trips. And so there's a lot that goes into it. It's very conservative, but it is an estimate, right? I mean, 17 years from now, are we going to have 2% average over 17? I don't know, you know, but it's the best that we have right now.
But, you know, I, I think back when we did the TSP update. I met a few of you guys when we went through that. And I sat in on some of those. And the thing, I think Henry kind of hit the nail on the head with his, his little map there, is that we've got the whole world surrounding Oregon City. And as we were going through that process, and I remember there were a lot of things that we were talking about trade-offs, you know. What we found out, go up through that process, is a lot of the things that we consider the constraints about Oregon City transportation are out of our control. And so that, that really, that puts us in a position where we lack the ability to affect the change that we'd like to see in some of those cases. Like, we don't, we don't have the option of adding another bridge or another road to get around Oregon City. You know, and so we're kind of stuck with the parameters that we've got here. And it's figuring out how to maximize what we've got. And, you know, I, I think, yeah, we've got policy, but how do we, how do we maximize? And if these guys have an opportunity to weigh in, maybe during the staff review process, and not wait until it comes before the planning commission, we might have some useful input.
You mean, when we're doing policy, like a TSP or a comp plan or...
But before it comes, you know, it's, it's kind of too late by the time it comes before the planning commission because all the policy and all the criteria is already established. So we just have to go with that. If they can weigh in ahead of that at some, at some point in the process, I think it'd be very useful.
They can.
Yeah.
The, the one thing that I see is that there's a number of planners talking about our little hunk of earth here and a number of agencies, but none of them seem to coordinate about this corner. 213 is one of the highest ADTs in the state. So is McLaughlin. And when there's no mention of that in a county transportation plan, or a city transportation plan, or a state transportation plan, how are we going to get anything going? We need to start identifying what is a regional concern and pushing it up the ladder so that it can be addressed, even if it takes 20 years. And Clackamas County is achieving success with Sunrise Corridor because that's the type of approach they've taken. But they've been pushing that for 30 years. It's been at least that long.
I think we're, we're, that would be an interesting political discussion about that corridor.
I sat in on some of those meetings where they were talking about it 20 years ago.
But I think there's a larger discussion.
But isn't that what J-PAC is supposed to be for?
Yeah, so I was going to, I was going to just touch on that. I think Henry, you probably have familiarity with this too. There is a whole other regional discussion about regional facilities. And as you probably know, $250 million grant was given to the state for reviewing I-205, specifically at the 99 interchange and heading south. It takes, sometimes it feels like it takes, you know, a lot of effort to get those kind of things to move. But they get there and, you know, this isn't the only group who recognizes that. I can't tell you how many more regional meetings I sit through where everybody's just recognizing that the transportation planning, all of the models show that, you know, we're going to take on more traffic than our, our systems can handle. And, you know, and there's not enough money to build our way out of that. But yet they're finding unique ways of getting some of these projects kind of, you know. So there's a whole regional plan that I think is important. These local TSPs feed those. They feed the regional model. The reason why our small models are important is because Metro uses those, you know, what's our comp plan really look like for densities? What are these, I mean, Oregon City's fortunate, we've got three concept plans. There's a lot more than a lot of the agencies have. I guess more and more of them, we're getting them as time goes on. But we were one of the first to attempt to get these concept plans approved. Which said, well, no, we want R6, or we want this much open space, or we want, you know, these kind of densities, or we want this kind of commercial to come in. And that all feeds more of a regional discussion about some of the bigger things. But you're right, there are expensive fixes. And one of the, and, and let's just take our own little bottlenecks. There are expensive bottlenecks to deal with. And I guess, at the end of the day, I'm pretty confident after hearing all this discussion that this group isn't saying it's time to put the skids on development in Oregon City. I'm pretty sure we're getting a good head nod on that. Or are some of you thinking it's time to stop development in Oregon City? Because we don't have, for one, we don't have that option. And for two, it's, it's an unrealistic expectation. Now, some would say you can slow it through appeals and things like that. We're seeing a lot of that. Maybe that's their approach, is to slow that development to, until they, until they reach an age that they don't care anymore, right? Or something like that. But, I mean, I hope with this group here, there's, first of all, trust in this development process. Because part of what I thought I was hearing at the tack level was, we don't know enough. We want to know more. And that, that's great, except for it's a tough, it's a tough target with turnover. You know, as people turn over, they don't understand all the details. So we've got somebody that's really informed. I mean, Denise knows our code better than most of us do. So, but she's not always going to be around to deal, you know, to, to, to carry that burden of all the...
Going for 100 there, John.
Right, she does a lot of that. But I just think that it's, it's a tough expectation because not, I mean, as informed as, you know, especially many of your planners and people that have been involved with it, you know the process already. So trying to, trying to educate everybody on our tack when we've got pretty short terms, and then they go away, we lose them, right? And, and trying to get them to learn the land use process, trying to, I mean, trying to get a tack member or a neighborhood chair or a planning commissioner for that matter, to be able to go to a neighborhood meeting and take that kind of feedback that's so negative usually. And then what, because you're trying to explain it, you find yourself trying to defend that situation. You're in a losing battle. And I think you just need to be equipped with enough confidence to say, I know it's being done right. I've seen several of these. If you don't believe me, you can talk to Laura and, or you get on the website and you can deal with that. But having us with our monthly meetings try to educate you on things that, I learned some things today. You know, I mean, Laura knows it like the back of her hand, but she's produced more staff reports than most planners have done in their career. So she knows that stuff. I don't necessarily know it that well. So to try to convey that with the staff that we have to, to the transportation advisory committee, I think is, was a concern, and I'm not hearing that. I like this policy move because we could, we could, you know, open up. We've got to watch budget because every time you open up things like a TSP, but we could go, we could do transportation system modeling one-on-one. We could get Carl Springer, who gets, and kind of share some of that information, share with us some of those assumptions. But you may or may not have been involved when, I can't remember how many of you were on when the, when the transportation system plan came through. But we could open that up and do a little one-on-one and figure out if we need to kind of think a little bit early. We're supposed to look at that every five years. In theory, I think we didn't look at our TSP for maybe 10 years. It cost, mostly because it costs a pretty big chunk of change. But, I, I mean, I see that being a policy thing that we can take on as a tack. But trying to deal with individual developments, have some influence there on the timelines. They're tight.
It's hard to get the word out there that we're not rubber stamping things. And I think that there's a perception that we have to approve and we have to do the analysis based on the criteria, even though, you know, there are the level of services that are kind of high on intersections and capacity problems and whatnot. But that it's hard for the average citizen to understand why it is we have to do what we have to do when we approve something, you know.
The hardest thing I ever had to do at city councils, listen to the 900 people screaming about the development or the concept plan and say, it's legal.
Yeah, I keep, I, you know, you keep hearing in the back of your head when you're working on the concept plan or other kinds of development, before you, how could the planning commissioner do this? You know, you want to have a positive message going forward with, with those kind of things to the general public, I guess.
So for me, it's important that this group in particular comes away from their planning commission meetings or tack meetings knowing that the staff are scrutinizing these things and providing a lot of behind-the-scenes, yeah, scrutiny, I guess, or, or debate or prep. I mean, I can't tell you how many developers right now are very frustrated with my department in particular, partly because of some staffing changes and communication. But it's also got to do with the fact that we're holding them to a pretty high standard now, higher than we ever have. And they're not used to that. Most of that's construction related, not so much on the land use side, but, you know, you know, on the land use side. Even Tony comes down, what are you doing, John?
Tell him you're doing your job. So, so let me ask, let me ask this.
Should have everyone's good.
Okay, should I be, okay.
So I, to me, you know, like, to work both on the, on the cove and rivers and go through the whole process to the land use. And I got to say, I mean, it was, it's, the, the Tony and this group, I mean, they're tough. They're really looking for the interests of the community and they follow that code. And, you know, we've gone through, I mean, a lot of rigor to get, you know, where we wanted to go and we had to work with them to get there. So I think they do a good job. And so I think, I don't know that any, that we would provide that much more value to what, what they're already doing, but if they could change what they have to follow, then I think that, that's where we would rely the most on.
Well, I must say that about three years ago, at one of the volunteer appreciation chin digs that they had, I walked up to Tony and I told him that I had had some personal experiences with the planning department recently. And I was super happy that they were really cooperative, helped me a lot. And he had this funny look on his face.
Waiting for the other shoe.
You sure you're talking about the planning department?
But.
He complimented him, he wasn't used to getting...
Well, and, you know, the, the other thing too is all the work that you do with, with getting out and getting multiple eyes to see it. The other side of it is, is you need that because sometimes things slip by. You have five things that you're working on. And, you know, and the, the one I love to trot out was the development behind WB where they were going to do a two-car garage nose-to-butt and only one door. It was like...
Stacking and stuff.
Yeah, and it's like, oops, you know, and, you know, sometimes that happens. But, you know, best thing in the world about that was we were able to say sorry to that development because, you know, that, because the room was full of people who were ready to burn down the, the developers.
So, I mean, for the tack, I mean, is this a discussion that you, that's helpful, that you're looking for? I mean, are we, are we addressing what you wanted to talk about here or what are...
Well, I think we've, the Transportation Committee has learned that maybe we need to gather information on the cumulative effect of developments and give you some input on that. And you'll call us these are codes. It's the two main things that I've got for the Transportation Committee.
This might be a little off topic, but multimodal alternatives.
Yeah, when's light rail getting to Oregon City?
Well, I mean, even just, even just...
When we get wet.
What it's kind of just coming down to bike lane enhancement and making sure the bike lanes are clean and clear and good.
And don't stop in the middle of a block.
Exactly. And that, 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 that instead of chip ceiling to the middle of the bike lane, maybe not doing chip ceiling at all like, like... You know?
But don't forget to put the manhole, the gratings down so they're parallel.
The gratings are good.
So that the bike car just fit right in.
Yeah, that's not a problem. That's all been addressed. But, you know, just if we're going to do that, I mean, if we're going to really do multimodal alternatives, I want to be able to, and I usually do for the most part, I'm being ultra critical, but just the things to think about that are, that are realistic and things that you could actually do. You know, bike lane enhancement and pedestrian for that matter, making sure that the sidewalks are wide enough. I, I've seen a span for five foot sidewalks, but these can be six. I'd like to see them go back to six, but maybe that's not possible.
Well, and that perspective was important because when we were talking about Myers Road, and it was the whole, do we have turtles or do we have little bumps? And you said, yeah, who's going to clean the gap where the bikes are?
Yeah, I still wanted the turtles though, but, anyway, so I've been very, I was waiting to speak after him. Yeah, that's okay. So I, I want to completely turn this on its head a little bit. I would like to see more proactive approach to the situations that we have. Rather than waiting for people to come and say, we want you to do this. How can we as a jurisdiction be more proactive? So...
Such as?
Well, such as, if we know that we have, obviously it's been pointed out, we have some regional transportation issues. So what can we show our community that we are doing to try to get those addressed? I mean, I moved here shortly after 213 opened. And now, you know, I think 213 was full the day that it opened. So what are we doing regionally to try to, you know, make that push? I know that they're saying, oh, Oregon City, you already got all this stuff. But I think regionally, being biased as I am about Oregon City, I think that our, our transportation issues rise a little bit more above what's going on in the rest of the metro area. The other thing is, is that I've looked...
You've looked at?
Yes, I do.
So, and I, and I, and I'm not to, not to belittle...
No, no.
Because, but I mean, in terms of, it would be interesting, maybe if we all took a ride, right? To see some of the, I mean, because it's like, you know, I think everybody can agree we don't want to be Beavers and we don't want to be Gresham. You know, the transportation impacts, right? But, you know, is it, is it a relativity thing? I mean, but, so, but not, not to say that I disagree.
No, I'm just saying we need...
I think that it's hard for us to get the regional partners to commit funds here because of the cost and the impacts and the complete failure of other areas.
Well, I agree. So again, we have been talking about Beaver Creek Road and 213 till we are blue in the face. So now, what are we doing? I mean, it's been 25 years. So we're just pushing that rock down the road, you know? How can we be more proactive about it? How can we be more proactive as a community? I saw something in your bylaws that I was completely surprised about, or I hadn't remembered it. What are we doing about trying to get some small amount of funding to create neighborhood traffic management plans? That's something that is one of your guys' charges. That would be being proactive. Getting more multimodal, that's being proactive. I realize that we're going to have to change the political composition of the commissioners, but Oregon City for the longest time saw itself as the end of the orange line, you know? How, what are we doing to try to promote that some more? Because anytime I've tried to take the orange line during the week, I have been very fortunate now. Four times out of four, I found a parking space in that garage. I mean, I, I don't know what happened, but maybe it's my good karma. And I take it into, you know, I take it in.
And maybe that's a discussion that we need to bring back in terms of, I mean, it's, it's difficult because the opportunities that build the max lines...
I understand, I know.
They, they do not exist.
I know, the federal government's out of the, out of the business.
There is no federal money.
There's a teeny bit of federal money, but not a lot.
Not enough to do max.
The solution doesn't have to be light rail. And I, I think we, we had a good conversation about, what, a month ago, with the representative from Tri-Net.
Right.
And when we talked about, how do we deal with some of these problems that are not necessarily solved by building more? And when we talked about how do we deal with some of these problems that are not necessarily solved by building more roads? I think it'd be great, and when we talked about bringing partners to the table, to hold the people like TRINAC accountable. And, you know, we had a conversation with them. And I'd like to see them come back and maybe T S P can hold their feet in power a little bit too. Have an ongoing conversation, not wait five years to talk to them again. Wait them back in a couple of months and say, okay, we had a conversation. What's happened since then? Is there any momentum?
And they've been for the tack on several occasions, especially in conjunction with the orange line and, and-
Well, but see, one of the things that we talked about at that meeting, that it was like light bulbs going off on their head. It was the first time they had even thought about the idea of local bus routes within the area, not these Portland-centric transportation lines.
And then use smaller buses, like before I went on the city's-
David was saying, well, how about a bus that connects from here to here instead of just the main line? So, we're feeding into the artery. And I, I think that's an area that maybe the T A C could have some input by maybe strategizing how TRINAC could help us resolve some of these issues that we're talking about with not necessarily building more roads. And we don't necessarily have to have a five-hundred-million-dollar light rail line to solve the problem. If you just add a couple more buses, it was a huge difference.
So, I think that this whole region could be much more well-served if we had a transit management association that actually looked at what our, how our employers are moving around. And as I understand, there was a precedence that worked with North Clackamas Chamber of Commerce, but it's now gone. But you have other parts of the, the region, you know, Washington County, Swan Island, Lloyd, et cetera, that they have these conduits for regional travel options dollars that we just don't have. So, that would be one consideration. Another is, just a general question to staff, are we, and how are we represented in the Oregon Transportation Forum?
The Oregon Transportation Forum, well, we, all of our involvement for, for regional groups like that is through J-PAC. So, at the local level, and with the county, it's a C four group. So, we've got our mayor and a county commissioner that sit on that. There's a metro C four group and a, and a more regional C four group across the entire county. And then, from there, they've got representatives that represent the city of J-PAC. And, but the regional transportation forum, you know, other than through that J-PAC group, about a certain amount of our, you know, like, we don't-
Well, we as Oregon City could be on the Oregon Transportation Forum. I was at the most recent meeting. Westland, Wilsonville, McLaughlin County, they're there and have their voices being heard. So, just as an option.
And, and we weren't there?
No.
Oh. That's what I thought you were asking. Okay.
All I've got to say is, I think this is, if for nothing else, just the general conversation was useful for, A, putting us all on the same page. Whether we agree with the page or not, we all agree that that's the page. And that, you know, I mean, as both a former city mayor and as a planning commissioner, I appreciate it when the, when subcommittees give us input. I mean, A, that's kind of why you're there. And B, it means that, that there's a broader response coming in than the twelve or two hundred pissed-off individuals that are in the group. And, and when it comes to policy, that's when you need, you know, the disinterest of you. Because you start making policy based on who's screaming in the room, then as soon as you make that policy, you have another group of people in the room screaming to go the other way. So, you know, and, you know, and we see, you know, the comp plans and, and our, they're, you know, it's good to have a group that's looking at stormwater and transportation and, you know, because then you can stay focused. I mean, I glaze over after about ten pages. And it takes me that, that, that hundred and, well, because it's on the computer. I can't read on the computer. So, it took me the whole week to get through that hundred and million-page document. And, and the good news is, large chunks of it are kind of boiler plating. So, when you go through and you look down, you go, not applicable. Great, I can skip that paragraph. Because you have to justify what you said, said not applicable. And I know their tree planting plan is not, you know, I don't care. That's not my thing. Trees are hurt. So, I go down and I look at, you know, stormwater or whatever, you know, I mean. And that's, that's kind of the way it is on the planning commissions. Everybody's got their thing. And, and so, it's useful for you to do your thing to make our thing a better thing. There we go. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
Very nice.
Yeah. So, what happened when Paul was absent and there was a water resource issue? And I was like, oh, yeah, well, I don't have to read that thoroughly enough. Paul's going to read that.
We all had to wait for that one.
We did. We all read it. We all read it.
So, and, and I don't think anybody's saying you guys aren't doing a job because of the fact that you're here and appear to be bright-eyed as opposed to ready to pass out is not all. And last night, and tomorrow night.
Well, I would, I would suggest on that note that we conclude the evening. And I would encourage everybody to continue to build on this because I think we've kind of touched on a lot of things that are issues that we're all concerned about. There may be multiple ways that we can improve those situations. But I think, as David said, having everybody kind of working toward the same ultimate goals, whether it's driving or walking or riding your bike, taking a bus, whatever it is, if we all kind of collaborate, I think, toward a solution, I think, we'll all get a better off.
Well, I'll be coming to the tack to talk to you about this article that I had Laura send to everybody.